Welcome, everybody. Just a quick announcement, we have a very large agenda tonight and hopefully I won't offend anybody, but we're going to try and keep it moving. And I apologize if I do. But first up is a joint meeting with Conservation Commission and Greenway Committee. Welcome, gentlemen.
Is this one supposed to be you two?
Who?
My news?
That's later. Are they coming for this?
I thought you were invited to this because of the funding.
They're coming after.
Are they coming after?
Yeah.
All set?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, I think you've got a copy of the notes that we distributed to the, in your iPads. Basically, the objective here this evening is to review the status of the project, to review the warrant, and then review the steps required as we proceed down this project. Basically, we were here previously. Well, the fundamental concept is we're trying to purchase, just purchase, the railroad corridor. This is the first step in establishing the Greenway. It, based on the analysis, and it's a joint project with the Greenway Committee, the nature of the biodiversity in that area, it's something that we could analyze, and the maps out on the corridor there indicate how critical it is to environmental concerns of the town. So we applied for a land grant, which is local acquisition for natural diversity, and this is very similar to the process we went through with Wolf Hill. And I think we were here when Ann Copper came with the PVPC and we indicated we're going to try this, and she showed us the checklist and so on. Subsequent to that, we found, we refined the open space plan and obtained a new appraisal for the Greenway, about $340,000, which was similar to what was obtained three years ago. Courtney has worked on the open space plan, and this has been completed and accepted by the Division of Conservation Services. And we sent in the application in early July, and all the data was sent to the town lawyer at that time. The project was reviewed in front of the CPC in the May-June timeframe, and we're hoping that the, this land grant could be awarded, or at least the decision would be expected in December of 2012. And the project will have to be completed within this fiscal year, and the expectation is that we should have it completed if we're lucky enough to get the warrant passed, get support from the CPC, and get the grant. Those three things have to be completed. The project has to be completed by the spring of this coming year. Now, we have an example in the printout that was given on your iPad, examples of the typical warrant. Now, this mimicked very closely the warrant that was developed for Wolf Hill. And I have been working, trying to find some of the other warrants associated with land grants, including those approved for Wolf Hill in 2009, in May of that year. And it's fairly similar, but I think it is a complicated warrant. Its language is complicated, and if it's, we would like the opportunity to have this reviewed by a lawyer to see if we could simplify it. The warrant itself should authorize the grant application. It's approved appropriation. It should approve appropriation for 100% of the total project cost and dedicate the land to conservation and recreation, which our warrant does, but it does have some complicated language in there. And typically, the land grant is reimbursed at a rate of about 66%. It was looked over by PVPC and also the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And, but basically, we would like this to be reviewed by a town lawyer, to make sure, or at least some town official, to make sure it is acceptable to present to, at a town meeting sometime in the fall. Once we complete this, this review, we have a bunch of, and if we're lucky enough to go through those three stages in which things are approved, that is, the warrant, winning and having the opportunity to accept a land grant, we have to move on to a number of things. They include negotiations with the railroad, development of a management plan, application, applying to the Conservation, Community Preservation Commission for the residual 34% of the negotiated price plus legal fees. If the community preservation has the funds available and approves expenditure, a second warrant in the spring to supplement the land grant will have to be voted on. Again, we're following the procedures that we've done and had in the past associated with the land grant that we were successful in, in 2009. Now, when, the project, again, is only the first step. We are just looking to acquire the property, hopefully in the early part of next year, to really make it into a multifunctional recreational trail. We'll probably need more resources, and we're exploring some of those options. We had Celia Rieckel out yesterday. She is the administrator of the land grain program, and she, we went around and saw both the, both the old land grant, Zipta Farm and Wolf Hill. We saw those properties, as well as going along the Greenway Trail also. So basically, that's the status of the project, and the one critical thing, we'd like to have the opportunity, we've taken this so far, but one of the critical things we'd like to understand is the financing and make everybody on board as far as the financing is concerned. And I have spoken to Donna, and she is aware of the project. And I have talked to Celia, and I understand the reimbursement rate is something like four weeks, four to six weeks. So that's, that's the time span in which some monies would have to be borrowed, or at least covered, the total cost of the appropriation of this land. And, but we also have issues associated with negotiations, how to best approach them with the needs of the town, and there's different approaches that we can use, and we'd like to review that in front of a lawyer, the town lawyer. So basically, that's all I had to say. Just review the project, discuss the warrant. We have various languages, some are much more, there's much bigger than, than what we have presented so far in the, in the printouts here. And then anticipate what's going to be going on subsequently with the various stages of the project, and then hopefully get some of these things reviewed by the town lawyer.
So we're taking, we are not going forward with this warrant article this?
Not in September.
In September. That's been discussed.
We have to apply to CPC and have, see if the funds are available, and I think they accept, and they review new projects on October 10th, and make some decision near the end of October. And we're in the timeframe of around November to have a new, a second special town meeting to, to consider this warrant. And the award date, in principle, should be either around December, early part of December.
But did I hear you say the completion date is next spring?
We have to do it within this fiscal year.
Complete the acquisition, or?
The acquisition. So we have to start churning the soil as to how to approach that acquisition, you know, what approach, legal approach is most effective, and make sure we have, and we also have to have a maintenance agreement. Now, this is a complicated project. It's 4.5 miles. We have two or three active farms, and, you know, the presence of bicycles and horses is a challenge, is how are we going to address that. Independent of that, we have a considerable amount of information about signage. Now, we do have resources. Is this, this feasibility study developed by the Greenway Committee, it's excellent. It has very nice maps, and it shows the wetlands. It is, again, the biodiversity aspects of this, in this Greenway in particular, is an awful lot of wetlands. So the commission, Conservation Commission, will be challenged with the help of the DEP, trying to define the conditions under which this, these, this trail is developed. And we also have maintenance issue, and there's some, there's a big, there's a large history that we have to digest associated with maintenance and development, and how they address the various types of activities that might be on this trail. And in some places, you know, there's precipitous on either side, it's narrow for the rail track, and then it's precipitous going down, others it's relatively flat, and all of that requires different fencing and things like that. So it's a complicated maintenance issue, very complicated. But right now, again, we're doing something very simple. We're just trying to acquire with the monies that are available through the state, and we're lucky enough to get the grant.
Let me just reiterate something. You talked about, once you receive the grant, you will receive it in four weeks, or four weeks after the negotiated settlement or agreement?
Once we, once we make an offer to acquire the property, and we conclude a sale, four weeks, and we spend what monies that we have accrued via whatever mechanisms we have in the town, then four weeks later, the state will give you, four to six weeks later, the state will return, will reimburse it.
Now, I'm hoping everything falls into play, but if, for instance, there's a shortfall in money from CPA?
Yeah.
What is your fallback position?
I would think we just have to withdraw the application and maybe submit it another year when the monies were available. I think we have a strong application, but we obviously have to have the monies.
So what is the first thing that we need to do?
Well, my suggestion, one thing that concerns me is the verbiage in that article, you talked about eminent domain, and that's a horse of a different color when you deal with eminent domain.
Mm-hmm.
I've had the experience of dealing with that on several occasions from the intakings that weren't not willing. We'll need a lawyer to review that.
Okay.
And then the other thing, too, is the verbiage from the grant program, the verbiage you're using, or did you make up this yourself, the verbiage in the article for the town warrant?
That was reviewed by, I didn't make that up myself. There's a simplified version to it.
Yeah, I saw that, too. I'm just saying that.
That's, that's my reason.
I think it's a good idea, and I would recommend to the board that give you the permission to get that to town council.
Okay.
And the board can vote on that later. But another thing that concerns me is, you talk about a maintenance package. Is the maintenance package as associated with the purchase of the railroad, various recommended processes during the design and construction, or are we talking long-term or all the above?
I, I think it's the simpler. I think it's the simpler. We are buying it for a recreational corridor, and, but we have to have enough language in there. Again, the one we did for Wolf Hill, we just have to have flexibility to anticipate it's being used, but I think, but there's a lot of signage here. The signage has to go up fairly quickly, actually. We have to make, we have 4.5 miles and a number of intersections here, as well as crossings. We have to have signage to make it reasonable for, that people understand what they can and cannot do on the property.
Okay. So this signage has to go up before there's even design and plans for the bike?
There's some level of signage for land grants that's similar to the signs that we've replaced on, on Zipta, you know, so the two that you put in on the former road at Wolf Hill. Exactly, again, this is much more complicated than Wolf Hill.
Because I know when you talk maintenance, I know from my past experience with previous bike path situation, that sparked a lot of interest, and people wanted to know what the indirect costs were going to be associated with maintaining. But this maintenance you're talking about is installing signs and dealing with the wetlands before we go into the design phase?
Yeah.
Am I right or wrong?
I think so, yeah. You know, I think, I think that's right.
So the first thing we need to do is have the language checked by town council, is that it?
That's right. And also help with, you know, exactly how we should, which route to purchasing this railroad property is most, most reasonable for the town.
What do you mean by which route?
There's various ways you can do it. East Hampton did it, fee simple, fee simple, eminent domain, and there's, you know, there's another phenomenon called railroad banking, and both of which have different characteristics, and they have to just be reviewed and tell us whether we can, which is the only way, or the way we can do it, do it most effectively. So again...
It's not that, I think it's very important that the council...
That has to be, yeah.
And my recommendation, that we have somebody who has experience with rail trails and Greenways, to be involved from the town.
Oh, yeah. So, and I have no clue who that is, but who's the one that's doing some of the property stuff now?
Katie Klein.
Katie Klein?
No, she has, at least she did the review of the Wolf Hill, and I was in contact with her some years ago. So she is familiar with the warrant language, but the warrant language that I just got from Eileen, and I appreciate Eileen working so much this afternoon, trying to feed me this data, it's much more, I think it's, it has some differences, it's more, it's, it's bigger.
My own suggestion is when you talk to council, ask them if they do have somebody on board that has worked with Greenways and bike, because we don't want to reinvent the wheel, but, you know, if they've been through this before, they know what you're talking about, they know the verbiage, and we don't need to educate lawyers in that area if they've already been.
And we also have the East Hampton experience. They have done it, you know, they have, done a lot of work, obviously, in developing their trails, so what experience they had should, you know, we should be networking with them closely. And the pitches that you have in there are just some taken and given to Celia when she was here. She also got a copy of the feasibility study, so we've given her a good, healthy amount of information about this project. And there's maps out in the corridor that like, we'd like to maintain, they're just going to describe the project and show the environmental sensitivity that we celebrated in making this application.
So if I can ask a couple more questions. You're going to meet with Community Preservation?
Yes, I have to, Mike and I, Mike Bula and I, well, the both...
My recommendation is to see her before her next meeting.
Yes, a letter should be.
Get there with a project. She said to me, she made, had to me and to Reggie, that there's no project really there yet, and she needs a project.
That's right.
Members can vote on it.
I talked to her today, and I, and I got the dates, and we'll get that out, probably this week, but it won't be addressed until the 10th of October.
And you've talked to Diane, Donna?
Yes, she's, she's aware of it.
She alluded that she could use short-term borrowing, the temporary? Yeah, okay.
Went in there yesterday, asked for the 360, and she?
Yeah, she prints it.
Wasn't there.
So I guess, motion to allow Charlie to contact town attorney?
Make the motion, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Have fun, Charlie.
Charlie, do you, who gets involved with the final approval of the prices? Is that just the board, the Conservation Commission, or the selectmen, or the bike way, and all parties involved with the final negotiation? I know you have an appraisal price, and that's pretty fixed as far as the high dollar amount, but it'd be nice to come in under that.
Sure.
But I'm just wondering, do we, do you need us involved in that process as the board selects?
If we, if we feel like it would be appropriate, we'll talk to the lawyer, and we'll have to figure that out. It's an open, it's something that, the commission, the Conservation Commission, the Greenway Commission are on new territory, so we just have to, we have some people who are experienced both on both commissions that have done this before. Matt Christie has worked on the highway.
Yeah, but I mean, what I want you to look into is make sure who has the final...
We'll, we'll try and keep very close contact about this and come back.
One more question?
Yes.
I was just curious how the partnership with the Iron Horse Preservation Society is going?
That is, there's initial, there's been contact and negotiations, and I think we're going to sit down in the not too distant future with them again. They are one route. Basically, in purchasing this property, we have rails on it, and one point of discussion or negotiation is who gets the rails, whether the railroad company keeps them, or does the town keep them. And one process, if the town kept them, is to hire Iron Horse, which would remove them in a period of a month or six weeks, and clear the trail, and pack it, and anticipating maybe some gravel on the surface, too. So that would be making it, usually in their letters, they say it is, it is, it's good for mountain bikes and hikers and strollers. That's, that's the idea, but we have to do a lot of, you know, understand that.
So have you received any references from the society? I mean, do you know of other areas, other towns, or what other?
Yes. The Greenway Committee, Committee has done a lot of initial investigation in this from Topsfield and Methuen and Danvers, and I think another town has had a good relationship with, and we have the document, at least, at least the first phase document associated with what they did on those properties.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Hearing nothing further, then we'll move on. Thank you, Charlie. Next on the agenda is Dr. Jurgensen.
You're there.
Please, Doc. I think, are we on? Are we going out?
Yes.
Then. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How can we help you tonight, Doctor?
I think we asked...
I think I was invited.
Oh, okay.
To explain how the roof process is going.
I think you should have received the letter from the Massachusetts School Building Authority on August 10th that confirmed that all of the prerequisites were submitted, submitted completely. They accepted the timeline that we were looking at that includes a September 18th meeting to vote on the appropriation of the money for the owner's project manager and design consultant. Reggie and I have been in touch with MSBA and confirmed the language for the warrant. I think you're exactly on track where you want to be going forward with the project. First, appropriate the money for the owner's project manager, then to submit the design for the school building authority to look at the proposed plans for their January meeting.
There were some questions on my part, early on, before the August 10th letter came in. There was questioning on how much money we were supposed to come up front with, and what is that final number, because it was bouncing all over the place.
The final amount is not to exceed $15,000. The MSBA has said, regardless of the size of this, regardless of how the project is estimated, the maximum that they will allow to be allocated that would be spent on the design phase would be $15,000. My assumption is because it's a roof project, it will probably be less than that.
Okay.
And then after, after MSBA approves it, then, then we have the amount that would go out to bid.
Now, my question is, is that something you have available to you through your sources, or are you looking for that?
That, that's what the design consultant and the owner's project manager would do. They, they would get an estimate for the project, that would be submitted to the school building authority, the school building authority would approve that or modify it, and that would be the figure that they would be working on for the final project.
But who's paying that? Is that coming out of your existing funds, or are you asking for funds?
That, that would be another town meeting, Mr. Colley, and which time we'd be looking at the total cost and considering the 50, approximately 55% reimbursement.
All right. I was just worried that we were looking to pay that tab now.
No.
We don't, we even know where our numbers are right now.
That's, that's exactly right, and that's, that's where the school building authority process is so prescribed. They're looking at you, us, to get them a figure. They'll take it to their board meeting in January, and they'll determine at that time whether or not they're going to put that on the list to fund, and you'll have that figure at that time.
Okay. Those are my questions.
So the warrant article that we have in front of us, Article 1, is the correct warrant article?
That has the, the added language that they added. On my copy, it's in red, it's kind of in the center, like the second, third sentence, for which the town may be eligible for a grant from MSBA. Is that added to your copy? Yes, okay, that would, that's what the MSBA approved.
There's a copy right next on the table.
Oh, thank you. Yes, that's the same as the MSBA had approved in the email.
Do we want to do the warrant article one at a time, or the warrant, one article at a time, or do you want to?
Well, we should be talking to finance.
What time are they coming down?
They're right after. But Finance Committee was present when Superintendent Jurgensen had brought this forward from the beginning. So they're aware of what's going on.
Then, I mean, I don't know if you've taken them off for a few minutes, if you have any questions on that.
Sure, be happy to.
They'll be coming down shortly.
Yes, the next 7:15 is a meeting with the finance. Any other questions for Dr. Jurgensen?
No.
Thank you.
We'll ask you to wait for them to come, just in case there's a complication.
Got you, thank you.
And we'll try and move. Do we have minutes, Reggie?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time. Signatures? We have a guy in the corner for signatures.
Sign two, sign two, the minute is two, you can sign, and Dougal, our hand can sign later on.
Okay. All right. I have a payroll warrant, P137A, for a total of $15,652.72. We can't even vote on them.
No, we can't, you don't wait, you gotta sign them.
Gotta sign them, remember. Because otherwise, people aren't going to get paid. And we have another warrant article, P137, for $169,000.
That's wages.
$483.17, yeah, both wages.
Doctor, they, they think you would know, have to do the feasibility study in the preliminary engineering on the roof.
Yeah, I can't, yeah.
You can't sign yet?
You have a good idea, if you can go forward, and, you know, what, by January, February?
Yeah, they need three. David signed this one.
Yeah, I know.
I think because they put it on the accelerated list, that if we have our requirements, I think that they'll prove it, and the need is people documented.
Yeah, so it's payroll.
The article that says MSBA has to documentate around the lease and the difficulty the town has had with that building over years. I think we can do it.
Bill Warren, here's a Bill Warren.
I'm not mistaken, didn't you have them up for tour about a year ago? Hey, I was involved with that, I think, yeah.
Doors, windows, some, some, he, and yes, he backed it up.
That one you saw, that was close.
Your voice was loud, the clarity wasn't there.
What do I do?
Does Ed have to, to hear us sign this?
No. Unless there's something to do with, if there's nothing on highway.
It's a bill warrant, is there highway on it, or speed?
Yeah.
Can't be, can't be a warrant without a highway on it.
All right, you can sign this one, right?
Yeah, that's, that's another bill warrant.
Do you really have 107 pages in here?
Yeah.
How come I got about 48 blanks so far?
That's why it's slow, because evidently it's, it's built.
Man, I got the first 53 fine. Maybe I'm just, I'm just super fast. Oh, yeah, they're coming, they're coming up.
Nothing to sign on the schools, just getting the details of what we're signing on the first. Okay, so these are all signed, so that, that's, no, so just details, right?
Yes.
What do we have to know?
All right, and then this is, Department Housing is what's, is coming in to talk to us about.
Community magic.
Community magic's coming in for that.
That letter for the board to sign is underneath.
That's why it's, it's slow because evidently it's, it's built.
Man, I got the first 53 fine. Maybe I'm just, I'm just super fast. Oh, yeah, they come, they're coming up.
It's not going to sign on schools, just give you the details of what we're signing on the first.
Okay, so these are all signed. So that, that's, no, so just details, right?
Yes.
What do we have to know?
All right, and then this is, the Department of Housing is what's, is coming in to talk to us.
Jim Maisick.
Community Maisick's coming in for that.
That letter for the board to sign is underneath.
All right, but I'll, we'll wait for them to.
Yep.
And then I have subordination agreement. Yeah, they're asking us to.
But see, that's why I wasn't sure how do you want to proceed until you spoke with Mr. Maisick.
All right, yeah, because this, this is taking our loan and making it secondary to evidently either a mortgage or a refinanced mortgage. And we've got, how much to these people?
$20,000.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about that in cases ever of default. Are we obligated?
No, we're, but we're never going to see our money for the problem.
No.
$30,700 behind $88,000.
Any questions?
I, I'm not sure I know the address, but.
Is there an immediate urgency on the signature?
On that one, there is.
Yeah, because they must be trying to refinance or something. And then we, oh, here's an invoice from PVPC for the Community Development Program.
What I had on Mr. Maisick and Erica Johnson is produced reports of what you, what are the invoices, what we've spent. So if you follow after his letter, you'll see the reports.
I know you've been here much longer dealing with this, but has any residents of ours been able to benefit from this yet?
Yeah, yeah, we have, yeah.
Okay.
A couple of them have. And some have actually gotten paid back over time, as I recall.
Okay.
We got a lot of them, I. Here's the Julia Barne, if I'm saying that correctly, estate. Donna Wallace here. 8612 Donna, reported town did not receive.
Correct. We still did not receive the $89,000 for the library or $89,000 for the fire. According to Beverly, that was with Mr. McHewlin's office. Once the SLIFOR signs the assent letter, she sends that into the court, they approve it and then we'll get those two checks.
Okay.
All right, so what we, is everybody familiar with this? The board want to issue, authorize the signature?
They make a motion to authorize the Julia Barne, uh, required signatures for the, is it a trust or is it a?
No, it's a, it's a bequest from the estate.
Okay, bequest from the estate.
Seven.
All in favor?
Pat Cantor has not called me back in regards to your question that you might ask this afternoon in regards to.
All right, well, then hold this in abeyance until we have that. When did I ask you to check with her?
To make sure it was okay.
Yeah, just. I just had Reggie call to make sure there was no problem with signing it.
No, Reggie, they have received money, both those agencies already.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
In that letter that Mike has, it gives a detail of what the town has received except the last two, July, June.
There's an itemization. This is the final accounting for the estate. They're wrapping up the estate.
Well, there's not liens or anything, right?
No, actually, this is just money to us.
Yeah.
To those bequests.
Right.
They do, it's two departments or three departments?
Yeah. Library and the fire department. She gave $89,000 and unfortunately, she's passed away, so difficult to express our gratification, but.
This was in her will, I think.
Huh?
This was in her will.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah. We have purchase and sale for Brickyard Road. This is the revised, updated, attorney-approved purchase and sale.
With the new language on cleanup?
Yeah. You want to look at that?
Yeah, I'd like to see the cleanup and then I'm fine. I'm fine with this.
Are you, that, we signed that, okay. Just, yeah. And then we have the, the election warrant that we need to sign.
Is that Eileen's going to be here for that or?
Yeah.
What happened? I just wanted to know if Eileen had to be here for the election.
No, no, no. No, this is for posting. So this is to be the sixth day of September, so this has to go out tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a motion to sign?
Make a, make a motion to sign the electoral warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it primary?
Yes, primary.
Okay.
Wait, I say that.
A preliminary.
State primary.
Okay.
Primary.
All in favor?
All right.
We, Reggie, I didn't see a PCF for Jeanne Donma.
Once Finance Committee comes down.
That's coming with them?
Yes.
One day licenses, nothing. Town order agreements, we got those, are in that. And Maisick. Girl Scouts want to use?
They would like to use this meeting room on September 20th. As of today, that room is available. They would like to use it from 5:00 to 6:30 and they would do the normal procedure, signing out the key, police department, signing it back in.
What are they using it for, just?
To recruit.
Oh, okay. Anybody have a problem?
No, not at all.
Anybody want to make a motion, that's okay for the Girl Scouts to?
I'll make a motion, the Girl Scouts, can we use the room on September 20?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Will you make sure they find out? Upcoming events, August 28th meeting. An email went out today and I hope you all got the note that came after about confidentiality on that. And that's going to be skip.
I didn't see that.
You didn't see it? Is it in?
Oh, yes, I did. Yes, I did. Yeah, I saw it.
All right, and I'm going to make that subject of a executive session on the 28th for us to discuss how to, how to handle that.
Under section five.
Yeah, all right. September, anything unusual about these meetings, Reggie, that?
No.
I've been a little out of touch with Reggie, so I don't, we don't have to do anything. State primaries, September 6th, special town meeting is at the 18th. Is, uh, I think he's coming with the Finance Committee, so we'll wait for her contract for that. Uh, is anything else? You doing, Doc, Brickyard Road?
Hmm, it's just, I'm looking for a, what is it called?
I think it's under 16.
16?
Something like that, 6 or 16 or 13.
Oh, okay.
I haven't seen you since you started.
Hi.
Which is probably a good thing. You got to run out of money and.
I'm fine with this.
All right, so while we're moving along, we have the purchase and sale for the Brickyard Road. We're, you know, the details are, you want me to reveal? For giving the liens and getting a nice.
Well, we reviewed them last time, we had a problem with how the plan was going to be left.
Right.
And that's been cleared out.
So I would.
We have final say, uh, meeting before it changes hands.
I, I would take a motion to sign the purchase and sale.
Make a motion to sign a purchase and sale for Brickyard Road. How do you say your name, Mohobots?
Wojcicki. I would, that's the way I would do it. Wojcicki. Wojcicki.
Okay. I second that motion.
All in favor?
Bye.
Jimmy, you're the only one here tonight?
Are you the Fight, are you, are you the Finance Committee today?
No.
Oh, there they are. They're rounding the corner now.
We're actually five. It would be a little, I'm the vanguard.
Well, we wanted you an hour ago.
Yeah. We were up there.
I know. We sent the carrier pigeon, but you obviously didn't get the message.
You want us to tell you?
Sure.
Want to see the truth?
Yeah. I've got to sign that. Please. I'm Reggie, this.
Hello.
I may have to get this tonight.
No, it's actually. It's like a brand, it's like a fire.
We got in trouble for that one time. I'm a kind of overprotective of those states.
All right. It's your turn.
All right.
You can do this by the PCS.
Oh, you have a PCS, I'm here.
Do you want to review the warrant on the 20th?
Yeah, so let me go back.
It's the warrant?
Well, you want to do the warrant?
Well, I just want to.
Yeah, okay. Well, that is over there with the warrant. So what are we going to talk about first with the finance?
Well, we want to talk, are you, John, and your board aware of what's going on with the Greenway?
Okay.
They were here earlier and they're going to have an article that was originally on this, this warrant, but it was pulled off till later on in the year because they, they needed to get some of their funding in line with the community preservation because it was, the article as it was, didn't have the funding and we don't have the money. So they need to get that and they're going to work with Community Preservation and the grant and sometime around November 20th, we'll have another article, I mean, another town, special town meeting with the bike way. And right now, we're just hoping to keep it with the bike way, I think.
Looking to the Finance Committee, trying to be reserved?
I just wanted your input, you know, and, and to be aware that this article was there.
And the grant doesn't cover the whole.
The grant only covers 66%.
So eventually we.
Thirty-four percent of it will be coming out of Community Preservation with additional funding because there was a question on how the land is going to be obtained. And there might be some fees for, you know, legal fees and additional, uh, reserves.
And anything else on that?
No.
Well, we got Dr. Jurgensen sitting there with the school, so we just want, Dr. Jurgensen's here for the school roof issue and he's, we held him over until you got here to see if there was a problem. And that's obviously Article One of the warrant and there's revised language there for, that the state wanted in the article. And I don't want to hold Doctor any longer than we have to. So if there's an issue or discussion with him.
From my point of view?
I mean, we intend to take this from the, from the stabilization at town meeting, which requires a two-thirds vote. Obviously, if we don't get the two-thirds vote.
You talking about the operational stabilization?
Yes. If we don't get the two-thirds vote, do we have a Plan B or is Plan B zero?
Well, we need the money in order to go forward with the process, so I guess Plan B would, we'll have to see when we, when we get there, but obviously.
Well, the problem is we have to read some rather stringent timelines, so.
I guess technically if it doesn't go like the town made, we have reserve money that we can do quickly, if that's, you know, what we.
Well, I, I guess that's what I think we need to have as a Plan B. Just, do we, the question is if it dies at town meeting, are we, is the project over and done with?
Yes.
I mean, at least from a personal point of view, it doesn't make sense to kill the project.
Well, I mean, because we're looking at the reimbursement for the roof. I mean, looking at the bigger picture, the roof, the roof needs to be replaced. If we do this correctly, the state's going to pay.
Up 55%.
Up 55% of it. If the state, we don't do this right, we'll be collecting the water in the tin cans again up above the roof. Do we want to do that?
I mean, this is the first time we're seeing it, so I have, we haven't had a chance.
No, and I understand that, but Mike, so that's what I guess I'm asking, so I think we need a Plan B. If you guys have some reserve money, obviously, this, we set up those stabilization accounts for just this purpose and we prefer to take the money from there, but if we don't get it from there.
Yeah, we put our agenda for next meeting, but I think, and everybody speaks for themselves, I don't think it'd be an issue if we're forced into a corner to go to the.
I mean, a two-thirds vote is.
We're just stuck down the road when people come and.
Right.
You know, say we need money from the reserve, it's, well, we got 15 plus.
Can you?
It's a project that's critical.
John, can you, I mean theoretically, can you take it out now and at a later town meeting, reimbursement from the operational?
We could transfer, we could transfer free cash.
I mean, it takes a vote, the towns do that.
Can you have a stabilization fund transferred?
No, no, pay from the reserve for now and then put it back into the reserve, but that would take.
Total stabilization.
But that would take.
Probably a vote.
Yeah, go for a vote, a free cash vote to move it back over. So six of one, half dozen of another, but.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, I'm, I'm. It's on a later, they won't, they're not going to. Is there anybody here that wanted to consider that at our next meeting?
I mean, I think it's just such a significant project that we, we've got a building that's, we put seven and a half million dollars into.
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago. So, all right.
I think we're all on board with how far we're beginning, but hopefully we're going to get it.
Right, thirteen, that's what it's sitting there for.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, should we put another article in for taking it out of the reserve?
They don't, we won't need an article, they can do it.
Just us.
Okay, fine.
They can do it at that point in time. But that's, I just, I want to have a plan. If Plan B is nothing, that's fine, but I don't want to be standing there not knowing which way, so.
I don't think we should go to town meeting and say, well, if you people don't.
No.
We're going to take it out of the reserve.
No, no.
Let's not set it up.
No, no, but, well.
Well, they don't know.
They don't know.
But I don't want to go in there and say that.
No, no, and that's my, my point is, we set up those stabilization accounts five or 10 years ago for this purpose.
Mm-hmm.
But we're looking at a roof that's deteriorating and the building's going to deteriorate, we got to take care of it.
I think we all agree with you on that.
Yeah, if it was your house, you wouldn't go any further than this without spending it.
We're going to go out there and push option A, of course.
Yes.
People are beginning, yeah.
Okay. Do we need Doctor here for anything else?
I'm assuming that you're going to get all your constituents out there. So that should.
Doctor, thank you for hanging around.
Thank you very much.
You want to do your highway things or what are we going to do?
Uh, yeah, you stepped off.
Well, uh, well, we can't take a vote, but you stepped down.
I think there's two articles that are for highway.
We can't vote the.
Good. Yes, you can.
If you're not there, you don't have a vote.
We don't have a corner.
Yeah, we have to have a corner, at least three.
Well, we can wait until Dave comes in later on and you can vote on it. We can review the articles.
You still have time, next week, you could still.
Still sign this, okay. So then what, what you want to do, the discussion we're going on?
Yeah, it's just a question, so I'll tie them up.
Okay.
The fuel tanks, I let the board know several, about a year and a half ago, they're going to need some major upgrades because we're, we're, we're not in compliance anymore. We have single wall piping going to our pumping stations and we need double wall piping. Our venting, venting system over there and our pumps are obsolete and these need to be replaced and you have a price there that has been put together. The engineering has been done already, but the price is, I think roughly $35,000 and we're anticipating for bids to do those upgrades or we'll be out of the fuel business within a year.
If this doesn't get approved, talking about Plan Bs, the money that we've got from FEMA, is that available?
Well, we, that money goes to play, to pay all the bills we have.
No, no, I understand, but is there a Plan B, does this, I remember you-
I mean, a Plan B is, I mean, I'm, I don't know, I know Vicky just came on board, and I don't think we know where our numbers are. Especially what's left over from last year, if we have any money. And I think, I don't think we're in a position to say we can vote on those. This is my own personal, I don't think we can vote on it at this time. And the same thing for the $50,000, for the road improvements that we had to put on back burner because of all the damage that was caused during the October storms, that we weren't able to get to. There are some, there are some surpluses in many of the highway accounts because of that. Because we had, we were running deficits, and then DOR required us to put all those monies that were spent into one fund, which I think has a deficit of $361,000. And money was replaced back into the police, fire, and highway department, where money was used to pay for these bills. Now those surpluses are still there on the highway department, I think, to almost $175,000, maybe. And, and that has not been verified yet for the end of the year. So I don't think we can do either one of those articles, because I don't know we're gonna get the money. And that's, that's my count.
So are you suggesting we, you remove the articles?
I, I believe we have to move the articles, but I wanna know what Vicky thinks about getting a number for the end of this past year. Are we anywhere closer to doing that?
You mean for September?
No, for end of June 30th.
No, no, I mean, have it ready for September, is what you're saying, have it ready for this, before this meeting.
Uh, well, you need to know next week, before we can take it off the warrant.
Well, we could put him on the warrant and pass him over.
Yeah, we can do that, let's do that. But I would want the finance committee to rule on that, and they would have to have those numbers to be able to do that.
I don't, I don't believe that I will have a definite number by next week. I'm still trying to sort out year-end.
And I'm not pushing you, so, my, my feeling is rather have you take your time, and we deal with this another time. Probably later on in the year.
As far as I know, all the expenses are in, but the whole rest of the procedure, I have to go through all that yet.
Well, we just leave him on, and if we don't, and then we got another town meeting coming, it's in November now.
Yeah.
So-
We can do that, but I was hoping to keep that strictly for the bike path. But, that's all it might have to be.
I'm thinking, going back to the school roof, aren't we supposed to have an election before the town meeting?
No, we were wrong on that.
You were?
Yeah, this is just to fund the owner's-
Feasibility.
Feasibility study.
So-
Yeah, so we don't, we don't, we thought we had to do the whole nut, which would require a town meeting, or a town vote, debt exclusion. But we only have to fund the $15,000, not the whole project. We'll have to eventually get there, but not now.
So we're not gonna have much at the town meeting?
No, it's really coming down just to the-
The roof?
The $15,000, which, which may turn out to be voter apathy, one way or another.
What about our proposal, is it, are we the top ears here?
Yes. However, Ed recommended that I do a little bit more research, so I'm working on that one.
And again, if we have to, we just pass it over for the town meeting.
I can be over there for four articles and passing three.
Well, I mean, I mean, we're in a, you don't know where the money is, but I don't know where the money is, I can't get up there and honestly say I know where it is.
It's too bad we have to go have a town meeting just for that one.
Well, they need that, there's a deadline they gotta deal with.
Technically, if we do it from the reserve, we wouldn't need a town meeting, but let's not use that as an option, maybe?
No, and it's, it's too late at this point in time, because we sent all the documents into the state saying we were doing a town meeting. And I suppose we'd have to amend all those if we go and do a reserve, they just wanna know where we're getting the money from, but we should- And actually, now that I sit about it, we should have been smart enough to, either or, we're gonna get it here or there, but we didn't. Article Six is blank. Mine?
It's blank on purpose.
Huh?
It's blank on purpose.
On purpose? Nothing anticipated?
Um, before your, or is it after, you have spreadsheets.
Oh. Okay. We gonna discuss that?
I believe so, I think.
Are we sharing?
And what it is, it's non-union raises, in-union raises, but we're not, we're not done yet with the unions. So, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we haven't settled any of the union contracts yet, so it might be premature.
There's nothing in the budgets that's ever been under, correct? So funding has to be available.
And we still have to remember that there's that $90,000 potential debt owed to the high school. Whatever, whenever we get a free cash number, subtract $90,000 from it, and that's really the number. All right, so we're, so Six, for the time being, is really, for the purposes of transparency, Article Six is, is a wage number for-
Non-union.
Non-union employees.
And union, if whatever you decide, because we did-
Right, because they've been frozen out.
But Article Four is a union contract, is that the same thing we concluded?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, the non-unions is separate.
I just-
It says union contracts are completed at town meeting?
We don't really conclude.
No, it doesn't say.
If completed.
If completed. But I don't remember putting those before the town meeting before, but I mean, it's-
I have a question.
Yeah.
How much does it cost to have a town meeting?
Town meeting isn't very expensive, I forget how much she said it's- The election that costs. Yeah, I mean, there's a class, there clearly is a class. And, I mean, we had to hustle this one up because of the school.
Well, is there, I'm in a discussion with only one article. For the, for the point of what she just brought up there, if we don't have the article, save several hundred dollars anyways. Can we take care of the school with the reserve, rather than-
You just let Dr. go?
Well, the only issue with that is that's, we don't have much, that much in the reserve.
Yeah, I, I understand that. You prefer not to, okay.
If you're for safety, look, if it's a few hundred dollars, we'll just deduct it from the school budget also.
How much is in that reserve account? We, we put some in this time.
Is it 33,000?
$33,200, the reserve for the budget for 2013.
So we're gonna spend half of it roughly when we do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And we always know we get people coming at the end of the year.
No, I meant the stabilization account that we're taking.
Oh, stabilization?
No, we talked about reserve.
Reserve, right?
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Thirty-five is in the reserve, but how much is in the stabilization?
Which one, 100 or something?
There's two, yeah.
Was it over 100?
We think it put over 100, and I think we put 100 in, so that really, that's really the logical place to take it from. That's what it's there.
It had to be the operational one.
Right, so- I, I, I think it is well over 100, not well over 100, it's 100.
I don't wanna say 120 or so, but I'm not sure.
That's really the place to take that number from.
So we're having a meeting?
We're having a meeting with one article. I mean, I think that's the clear choice.
One, one issue we're gonna have is that people find out it's only one article, and they may say, "It's not worth going." We need at least what, 25?
35? 35? Gone up in the years. Twenty, it used to be 20, but now it's-
I've been reading lots of other towns and whether you're doing, easily have taken that 35 and substituted.
Well, Robert, you might be right, because we've doubled our-
We've doubled our population.
But what dictates how many, is it Sandra, or like, or the-
Shepard Eileen. Eileen would know, but I, I think years ago, she told me it was 25.
It was, I asked her.
I think, but that's years ago, the last time I asked her.
Because we should probably find out before the town meeting.
Well, it's been years, but there was one where we had to go and draft people.
We pulled them off the baseball field several times earlier.
I asked in the last few years, it was 25.
Maybe just towns-
Right, 25.
It's maybe just towns under a certain size, it's 25. If we get all the, if we get the boards, there's 10 between your board and ours.
Two committees makes up 25.
Bring your spouses or children, or take them to the flyers.
Five of you, five of us.
Maybe we should give out scholarships that night, gotta drag in a few more. All right, I'm sorry.
I'm registered.
Well, I meant the parents.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we digressed. Do we need anything else, folks?
Um, just, John, did you realize there was a supplementary budget that was passed? Signed by the governor last week. And in the supplementary budget, they're coming up, the state's coming up there, I believe they're 12.5% for the storm Irene, and 12.5% of the storm for the October 29th Halloween storm.
So they're adding that, too?
They're, they're, they're gonna be, the state is required to give 12.5, and the towns are required to pick 12.5. In the last several years, they didn't come up with the 12.5, we had to eat the full 25% match. So they're coming up with the 12.5 according to supplementary budget. So that's gonna help us a little bit, too.
So you feel comfortable there, in the moment?
Yeah, they've done in the past, when they pass these supplementary budgets. Not a lot of money, maybe less than 20, but it adds.
That's money.
Yep.
I have another question, Vicky. The, uh, the current town expense and revenue savings, uh, the last one we got was the expense, but there's, there's nothing filled in, it should see actual expenditure, budget, or anything.
Which year are you speaking in?
Uh, 2013.
2013, I'm working on, and I should be done tomorrow, I entered the budget. Just for the budgets, if anything needs to roll over, that will be done until I'm done closing the year, but-
Your date will have them?
Your date I will have.
Expense and revenue?
Yes.
Great, thanks. That'd be very helpful.
Anything else? Hearing none? We will move on. Thank you, John.
Do you have anything for us?
I don't think so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for coming down. I'll show up at the town meeting, we'll need your vote.
Yeah. We need a corner.
Bring your dogs and cats.
No.
I don't think we can vet everybody, as far as finance.
So, have you, have you, Vicky?
Guys, why don't you set up a meeting?
Thank you, Reggie, one of my social faux pas.
You're hard. Good, thanks. Nice to meet you.
Official record keeper for the finest committee.
Okay, I didn't have enough people here, so I was gonna reach out, but it's-
Yep, sign me up.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome.
Sure. Yeah, I might need some guidance, so I might, you know, I'll-
We have to work out, right? Hey, Reggie, do we need to find, we don't need to find-
Has she looked into the contract? She's given the contract.
She has the same. Okay. Vicky, while we're here, Robert Floyd, town moderator.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
So, yes?
Yeah, she's seen it.
Um, while you're here, you wanna do your contract?
Certainly, that's- Harvey wants to hear.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to introduce you to George, he's here every single week.
Oh.
So, Vicky, this is-
The shadow, the shadow selection.
Yeah.
We still, we still don't figure out why we're so entertaining that George is here every week.
Hey, you know what, you're, he's involved, right?
He is, he's a good citizen.
Vicky, you, you got a copy of your contract?
Yes.
It's a draft, it's a draft.
A draft. Any changes, deletions, anything?
There was one correction, I corrected the 60 from the 30.
Yes.
And that was what you had stated on for the remove, removal, 30 days.
What page is that on here?
I just hit contracts, am I in the right place, Reggie?
Ooh, um, because I didn't have enough memory-
Oh.
-I had to take the contracts out to put the agenda in.
Oh. So it's in the agenda area?
Yeah. Page three.
Gotcha.
On mine.
On yours?
We have 107 pages.
Oh, on your total, I thought you meant just the contracts.
And it's, and it's so loaded, it's slow.
It was very slow.
Seventy-two.
Oh, seventy-two.
Is where it begins.
I just keep feeling this.
You should give us a, um-
It's really fast, though.
Mine isn't.
No, mine's-
It's gone over there.
The old men are slow. Well, I guess I get there eventually.
I feel like I'm playing roulette.
On 76, I just had one question, and it was in regards to, it's a two-year contract, however, we're asking, we're stating three weeks for 2015. That was the line.
Then I would suggest that we eliminate that language, eliminate any confusion that it's more than a two-year contract. Hopefully, you're here for the third, and fourth, and fifth, and 100 here.
You can have me, sir.
Hopefully, you'll celebrate your 75th anniversary here, but, uh-
Can you write that in her and have her initial?
Sure.
If there's nothing else, does the board have a wish?
I'll make a motion to sign the contract for the rural town accountant.
Hate to say it, I'm just getting to the contract now, but I did read it at dinnertime, so. And I apologize, because the iPads are slow, because the documents tonight were so big. Won't be that slow again next time. There we go.
All right, I got a motion.
You there?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to the contract, too.
Well, you have it.
Page 73.
I know, I'm trying to, but I'm, I'm still only 40-something, and, you know, it freezes, and then, uh-
Mike, she's gonna get a hard copy, which we probably shouldn't do.
Yeah.
There's a little button-
Yeah, it doesn't do anything.
This button right here, you can move it up and down.
It freezes, it's, I think it's because it's so loaded with documents tonight, it freezes.
Yeah, that's what's happening, Reggie.
You should have bought the bigger ones.
No.
That's what we get for being cheap. You should have bought the bigger memory ones.
I'm in 55.
You're getting there.
I'm catching up with you. Seventy-two, right?
Seventy, you need three, I think, it starts. Yeah. Well, there's a, there's a title page on 72.
Vicky, well, I'm waiting for Reggie to come up to contract. You're, you're gonna need Dave's assistance, Kilsen, various times in the future.
Yes.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion that she has that ability to bring him in when she needs him. And bring him in when you need him, if the board's holding you.
A second.
Well, before we vote on that, are we talking about, I mean, Vicky's not gonna charge us, but what are we talking, David?
Dave's got a rate that we agreed to before, but I'm saying, I'm, we only have X amount of money, and I hate to use it all up, but if you do need him for various things that you're not aware of, that-
Do we budget documents coming in?
We didn't budget, but there is a surplus in the line item for that, I think, of 5,000. I hope we don't use the 5,000.
As long as there's money there, be mindful, don't overspend it, and-
It'd be nice to put some back, but if you have to have it to catch up, that's the most important thing.
Thank you, we, him and I did have a discussion about what would work for him. And I left him a message yesterday to see if this week worked for him. He was thinking maybe once a week, or one afternoon, you know, not the whole day, but an afternoon, whatever. So I told him I would call him, so that, you know, we could kind of-
I mean, my feeling is, and my motion was, to make sure you have that resource.
Yeah.
Uh, use it if you need it, but once you feel comfortable, I think we should move on.
Of course, of course.
Okay. And my understanding is David has turned in his keys.
I have his keys.
So, he, uh, not that, not that it was a problem, but security-wise, we have his keys. So you now have the extra set of keys, or you have, you have, you're using his keys?
He gave me his keys.
And you're using his keys?
I have his.
So that accounts for that set of keys. Did, we made a motion, and was there a second to sign?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Every, was there any?
I took it out.
There was one change, and we need to have an initial.
I took it out.
You took it right out?
Mm-hmm.
What, what change did that?
The three weeks.
Is that in?
Three-year contract, so-
Is that 13?
It was highlighted 15.
Yeah.
During July 1st, 2014.
So we took that out?
Right, because it's only up to 2014.
Okay, so that's gone. Everybody's in agreement, then?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Just make sure you remember that.
Reggie, while you're out, we talked about, she has a discussion, call David, that she needs to prepare.
Yeah.
This is Erica Johnson, she's from Pioneer Valley Planning.
Hi, Erica.
Um, I need leaving at eight, and there's a document in there that needs to be notarized.
Okay.
So I'm gonna let her know, but as soon as-
All right. What needs to be notarized?
Um, I need to see Mr.-
Okay. Okay. Excuse me.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Maisick is not coming, she's in the house, so Erica is here to represent.
All of Mr. Maisick's interests?
Okay, here we go.
I don't find what she says needs to be notarized.
Okay, I'm sorry, now, where are we going back to?
We're going to community development, department, community development, the housing. There was an audit by the state or federal, I don't remember.
There are federal funds that go through the state.
But who audited us and...
The state.
And we... And we have a deficiency, one deficiency and one, two suggestions.
Yes.
And that is in your... That is page seventy.
Reggie, is that required?
Okay, good, of course.
No, that's not it either. That's me queuing.
I know, but I see witnesses over here. Oh, Eileen signed too.
Okay.
Mike has the document in front of me.
Yeah, I have it here. I'm just trying to find something else.
Hey. Hello, Eileen.
Hi.
Trying to find something.
Where was that? I know that's here, okay.
I'm glad it's not coming up.
It's...we do need an index. This, what needs to be notarized is the subordination agreement. Reggie, are we okay disclosing these names in public? I mean, they're public documents, so I would assume so. Let me, let's say it's East Street. We have a loan out to them of $30,700 under this program. They are now borrowing $88,800 from RBS Citizens Bank. Obviously, the bank won't give them a mortgage unless they're primary on the note. They want us to take a secondary position. If we don't take the secondary position, people aren't going to get their mortgage. What's the board's pleasure?
What's the town's liability? That's my concern.
We'll lose our thirty...well, we won't lose our $30,000. We're just administrating the grant, but someone else will lose their $30,000. If they go belly up and the bank forecloses, we'll never receive the $30,000. The bank will take it for the $88,000. We would have to bid in the $30 plus the $88,000. I have no idea what this property might be worth.
So, I take it your agency's recommending that we sign this?
I am not familiar with this document.
This came from Laurel Foley Boucher.
Yes.
He's filing this close subordination agreement for an FY-10 housing rehab applicant that needs to be signed in front of a notary, turning me this is an applicant looking for refinancing and needs the agreement to do so. I have collected all the necessary paperwork to take place. Please expedite this as soon as possible. The applicant is closing with the bank on the 11th of August. And we'd like this signed by the 7th of August, if possible.
I'd like to see these documents a lot sooner, but I don't know when this came into us.
August 1st. Problem has been we've been...huh?
My mistake.
Your mistake, well. But we've also been missing people, so...
I think the reason why we're holding off is because of the noncompliance. I don't know if that, but like I explained to the board members, Mr. Maisick disagrees with the state. So, I think that's where they're holding off on these two separate things.
I can't speak to that. Going, well, I can speak to that first, saying these are two, these are two separate things, and I'd like to speak more in depth about the letter. But first with this, I'm not in a position to give you any information either way. I do know that Laurel will be in the office tomorrow, so if you're interested in calling her and speaking to her directly, she could provide you some more information about this. And that would probably be the best thing.
I think at this point in time, we signed it tonight, we hold it in abeyance, talk to her, and also, I think we need to talk to town council to make sure that because we are now agreeing to something that we aren't putting ourselves in the way of any problem if the homeowner loses or gets foreclosed on because it wasn't armed, are we now putting ourselves in the way of harm because we've taken the state or federal money and subordinated them to something that they may not be aware of, and then taken on liability that we didn't intend to?
I agree with that. But I would make a, I don't know if you can make, I'd like to make a motion that we give you the ability to sign it after you talk to Laurel Foley.
That's fine. We can do that when we don't have to have...
And then she can, you can, you have to witness that?
Yeah, well, I can get a notary. I can come in and sign it and notarize it.
I would feel much more comfortable from her, from the people.
Okay, I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, in the future, if we can get these a couple of weeks ahead of time, so we know what we're looking for and say...
I understand that, but since we're meeting every day...
I understand, I understand, but I'm just saying...
You know what? We didn't have a meeting, because I would...
Fourth, we canceled.
No, no, the seventh.
The seventh, we did. We were here on the seventh.
There was one meeting we missed.
But the point is, we could tell this Laurel Foley that in the future, please give us a lot more...
This is not the first item that you've...
I'm looking at the liability. We're putting the second out of an mortgage.
I know, but I...
I'm concerned about that.
Okay, I understand.
If I can just add, if you're not able to get through to Laurel, if Jim is back tomorrow, I can't say that he's going to be, he can also answer.
Okay.
He could also answer the questions about that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just rather not.
All right, well, so, well, we had two bills here, too, two invoices.
And...
Oh, and we have the final invoice.
Yes.
So, does this mean the program's done?
No.
Well...
Oh, this is a community development program. I'm looking at something different. I'm sorry.
You've got to do it a lot longer. We can't be either that bad.
Too soon.
All right, so, we have a deficiency.
Well, I think I want to start by saying that there's always, there's always something. There's always a deficiency. We've never been through a monitoring where something didn't come up. So, this is not, this is not uncommon. When this came through, it wasn't alarming, it wasn't upsetting, it was, it was common for us. Obviously, the wording is strong on both sides, which I think make, make the issue larger. But I don't believe that, that it's a huge issue. We have been dealing, as an agency, with changing policies, changing regulations, specifically around the housing, and as over the past few years, we've encountered more and more of these sorts of monitoring letters pointing out things, concerns they have with the way that we do things. I know when you read through this, one of Jim's comments that he prepared was, "We've been doing it this way for 24 years." So, a lot of issues that seem to be cropping up for us are that they're looking to do things in a way that are different than what we've been doing right along. So, we're learning to alter our policies internally as they, the DHD, are also altering their policies. So, again, I don't see them as being big glaring things. In my mind, glaring problems are financial mismanagements, program mismanagement. None of those things were happening. The first findings that they had was in regard, regarding to the initial inspection report. I know they're, they're interested in seeing more information provided in that report. That's been, that's been an ongoing process for us over the past few years as we have revised our forms to add more and more and more to them so that we can cover all of the, all of the issues that arise in these housing projects. So, that's, that is something, again, I agree with Jim's response. And Jim put this together. I keep referring to him. His response being that, okay, we don't agree, but we'll still, we'll do better next time. They did happen to pull a file where there was something missing. We admit it. There was something missing. There was only one thing missing, but still, it was missing. So, that is, that is a deficiency on our part, something that we admit to, we agree. Other than we'll do better next time, there's really nothing we can do to fix it because they caught it. That's why they come out, so it just shows us that we need to, to be mindful of...
I don't have this document in front of me, but is this deficiency toward the Town of Southampton as a lead agency, or toward PVPC?
It's directed toward the town because you are the lead agency in this group. So, it does say, you know, Town of Southampton's grants. However, there's you subcontract with us on it. So, really, so how, how the response is worded is you talking with your agent, which is us. So, superficially, it appears Southampton, but when you get down into it, it is a litigation issue.
Well, I mean, being on the Board of Selectment, I'd like to see it resolved.
Yes.
And documentation that it has been resolved.
Sure.
As one member, I'm not speaking for the board's pocket. And I've worked with Jim on many projects in the past, so I mean, I'd just like to have this resolved, dealt with, and moved on. But I do want it dealt with, because I think it's important for the Town of Southampton to clean this up.
I agree. Do you tell you that we have, since, since the time of this monitoring, we have had a meeting with all of our community development staff, with our housing rehabilitation specialists. We have revised some of our internal policies so we can be more mindful that everything that needs to be into the files is getting into the files, that we have clear forms where things are filled out completely so that we can avoid any, any additional issues. There's still some, some points that, that we'd like to argue, that we plan on arguing with your signature, which are important, especially getting into the second part, which was not a finding, was actually an issue of concern regarding income documentation. And in that particular instance, we've been getting some, some mixed information as to what specifically they're looking for as far as documenting that the clients that go through our program are low and moderate incomes. So, so we've, we've kind of been chasing back and forth as to what exactly they want. I will tell you that we've moved toward a system of just getting everything now so that, so that everything, everything is satisfied. But at the same time, feel like it's an issue that we want to press a little bit to see if we can, in fact, get a clear answer. And I know that that's an issue that came up on other grants with other towns, so it's not specific to Town of Southampton.
It's only a question, is this going to affect us in the future as far as various ways our grants are scored?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay. That's good. Now, you mentioned two positive things we talked about.
I mentioned two positive...
I thought you said there was one negative and a positive, two...
Oh, I said there was, there was one that they call a finding, which is stronger than an issue of concern.
Okay, okay.
So, the other two, I suppose.
All right.
There's a noncompliance and two issues of concern.
Okay.
However, we still intend to, to argue our points and hopefully have everything removed from our file. That's the, the intention of this letter and the supporting documentation that goes along with it is for this all to be resolved so that our file can be free of error.
They will notify us when it's resolved.
Yes.
Thank you.
They want something signed by us, though.
Yes. So, we prepared this letter on her behalf. It's what we do, plus we get things like this pretty often, so we've got it all written up and ready to go. We just asked that you put it on your letterhead and sign it, and send them a copy, and send us a copy. Or actually, excuse me, Jim wanted you to sign it and send it back to me, and then we'll send it out.
And you'll give our letterhead?
Oh, yeah, it's in your...
Oh, sorry, done.
Jackie, you have a question?
I have a question, because the audience doesn't have this letter in front of them.
Yes.
Could you give me, give us a brief synopsis of what happened here? And, you know, tell us what you're going to do to fix the problem, so everybody understands?
Sure. So, on behalf of the town, we run the housing rehabilitation program, something that we've run for many years. We employ several people on staff who do client intake. So, if someone in town is interested in finding out if they qualify for the program, they can call this Laurel Foley Boucher, who does the income qualification. She helps people through the application process. She meets waiting lists. We have a housing rehab specialist, Rick, Rick Baris, who will allow, who goes through and reviews every house. You've made it through the application process and find that you are, in fact, income qualified. There is a clear need for, for what you need to have done. There's money available through the grant. We'll send Rick out. Rick's going to start with one of these reports, and that's, that's where we got our first ding. They came, they pulled a couple of our files, they, they looked through and said, oh, yeah, he went through. We know he went through, he went through, he took some pictures, but, but there could have been more information. There were vital things that needed more information, perhaps were lost over. I haven't reviewed the files in their entirety. So, so he will prepare that report and determine how much it's going to cost. Then we work with the homeowners, go through a bidding process so we can ensure that we have a good price for the repairs. We work with the homeowner to pick contractor based on, based on the prices, based on the bids that come in. We then monitor the construction process. We deal with all the contracts, we help, if the contract is still with the homeowner, but we help them go through all the, all the contracting process, deal with all the construction. Rick continues to be part of the process, the progress, going out, doing visits. Sometimes other people, people, the grant managers, myself, or some of my colleagues will go out, check, make sure things are going okay. More often, if something's not going okay, that's when we, we get involved. So, we walk, walk through the full process. We handle all the payment. The homeowner never gets money. The town gets money briefly and then hands it over, and we take care of all the, all the billing and payments and everything. So, so there's the constant involvement of the homeowner, but at the same time, they don't have to be involved in all of the contracts and money. When it's, when it's done, when Rick says it's done, when the homeowner says it's done, we sign it off, we fill out the paperwork, the town says it's done. That's when their, the loan starts, the 15-year deferred payment loan. Every year, the homeowner stays in there. Money decreases off that loan. They stay there 15 years, no more loan. Where it gets more complicated is when someone wants to refinance, like in the case of the, the letter that was here, or in the case of when the home changes hands. That's when the lease money that gets paid back.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so what's the basic problem here, like right now?
So, the basic problem here has to do with record keeping. So, the state has found issue with the record keeping that we do. First, in the inspection process, they felt like there was, there was things missing. There should have been more detail in the initial walkthrough that happened, going through and looking at every part of the house, structural deficiencies, mechanical deficiencies. So, that was a ding. A second ding that was here, a payment was made, and there's no record of the invoice. What happened to the invoice? We don't know, or we haven't. So, there's a deficiency of, of the planning commission where an invoice was lost. Clearly, an invoice came in, or we wouldn't know, wouldn't have known what to pay. So, clearly, it had been there at some point, and where it is now, we may never know. I imagine if it's like me at home, it will turn up someday, far in the future. And the final, the final issue was in terms of income documentation and the documents that we requested to prove that the applicant was, in fact, low or moderate income. So, how we're dealing with this internally is, we've had a meeting already, so housing rehab specialist knows that when there's a form to fill out for the initial walkthrough, there can be no blanks. When you're done, you leave, there are no blanks. You need to have your pictures, you need to have everything. This all needs to make it back to the planning commission. Not back to your car, not back to your briefcase, to the planning commission in our files, so we have all this together. The lost invoice, obviously, we just need to be more careful. Sometimes things get lost. We don't want that to happen. It wasn't necessarily a change in policy or procedure, it's just you track your stuff. And finally, the income verification, we're dealing with that by requesting more documents. More documents from every applicant, just so that we can, we can prove the income beyond any, any question. Is that okay?
Thank you.
And that basically mirrors the letter that's here. Pretty close, did very well. The noncompliance with administrative requirements for grants, initial inspection reports, and invoice. And again, here, Mr. Maisick says the method used by PVC for the past 24 years has been full compliance with HUD regulations. And they want that removed from the record. The lack of an invoice may have caused, but we can't find it. It's gone. But there was some comment about the second invoice.
Yes, second invoice.
Somehow...
I believe it was, we did better the second time.
Right.
Or something to that effect.
A separate invoice on contract letter, coming formal payment request form signed by the owner, which does not contain information. The response, the PVC admits that this was the case and that the actual invoice was either misplaced or approval occurred without obtaining the invoice. The second payment request for this project was accompanied by an invoice. The PVPC has indicated that it was an oversight and not that it's routine practice to require supporting documentation. The income verification is exactly as was explained, and there was some question about the way, whether there was enough detail in an inspection report. So, do we wish to sign this letter?
Make a motion to sign that one.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we supposed to mail this, or are you supposed to take it back?
She's going to take it back.
I'd love to take it back.
I'm going to make this out.
Copy. So, then while we do that, do we want to pay their invoices? I have invoice number nineteen...oh, here we, nineteen, how come I have final invoice number eleven?
Just one invoice, yeah.
Yeah, for two different... Yeah, for two different things, I guess. Southampton Community Development Fund Program. For $12,385.43.
This is the program right now that is doing the financing. And that's for June.
Should be a date, you would think. From 6:01 to 6:30. And this is for their time spent on it.
Make a motion to sign the invoice for Pine Valley Planning for $12,386,043 for the community development program.
Second.
All in favor?
I have one more question. I'm just curious, how many times the state does an audit or, you know, like checks up on the organization?
Once per grant year.
Once a year?
Once, once per grant year. So they will not come back again for this grant. There have been some, this isn't always, always the case. I had one grant that went about two years too long, and they did come and visit a second time, but typically, it's, it's one time. I also want to say again that we hope to, we hope that they will agree with much of what we said here. Obviously, the invoice we can't undo, but hoping that their final, that their, their final word, their final say will, will not have, at least will not have the finding and will not have one of the issues of concern. And obviously, we'll let you know how that.
That's right. I do have a question, and maybe you can answer, and I'm not sure if you can, but the total grant, is it over $500,000?
Yes.
So this is over a multi-year period?
Yes.
When this is completed, or when we meet 5,000, we're obligated to do a federal audit?
Yes.
And who's paying for that? We are. You don't know.
I.
If you could check out and find out, yeah.
Jim can answer that better.
Well, that's a question you'd like to have an answer?
I, I will, I do know that we do, we do have money that is set aside for that. I don't know how that process works, but I can certainly find out and let you know.
Okay.
I have another invoice, number 11, final invoice, for the Southampton Community Development Program, federal fiscal year 2010. Housing Needs Assessment, Granville, Blanford, Montgomery, final invoice number 11, $5,823.09 for the period of time from 7:01:10 to 9:30:12. How come we can't pay it bill like that? We can't pay it pass physically?
It's not our money, it's grant money.
Oh, it's grant money?
It's grant money.
Is there a different?
If it's town budgetary money, we, we can't spend it after.
Right.
You 30th, unless it's bad, encumbered. But this is not that kind of money, this is a grant.
And I, and I understand that, but there may be differing documentation on the actual sheet, because I know that we've sent multiple invoices, so there may be, I'd have to look at that again. There may be, thank you, there may be something that says what's the, the grant period was versus what the invoice period was. And I could also be 100% wrong.
Don't we have a couple things? Aren't we doing the rehab versus the Hilltown CDC?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting confused on. The two invoices coming in at such rate.
Yeah, okay. There's, obviously, you saw this, there's conflicting, conflicting things. Up at the top of the charges, it's showing, it's showing the entire length of the program versus where the charges are, and the charges are a different time period.
Within that, that scope?
Yes. It's, what I know to be true of what it shows, obviously. And you were, you were correct, so you know, this is something different. But if this needs to be changed, so it's something that, that you feel comfortable and are able to sign, we can do that.
I'm not, I don't think there's a problem with that, because it's not our money, it's grant money.
That's true.
And if, if not, you're going to get another letter straightened out and we'll have to sign it.
I do, I do know that there have been multiple invoices, because I've had to put them all together. So I, I do believe this is, well, I know this is past the fiscal year.
There a motion?
Make a motion to sign, no, Hilltown Assessment for $5,823.09.
Is there a second?
This is unpaid balance.
Unspent, evidently, the money left over. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Is there any?
Who was the last one?
Huh?
The Patriots?
No.
Red Sox?
I know, I watch it out of vain.
Working on getting that score.
Wait, work, sense of pain, frustration.
I'll watch the Patriots.
I watch the Red Sox.
Did they, how many did they take from the Yankees?
None, one.
Just one, just trying to talk.
Let's go home, I don't think I'm going to fall asleep tonight.
Is this together?
You do.
We are sitting up.
Oh, no, I'm going to.
Hey. I mean, I have to.
You might have.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
No, I think we're set.
How is the, how is the program being received? Overall?
I, I think it's gone extremely well. I, I know it was relatively new. I mean, we have some, we have some programs that have, have been operating consistently for over 20 years, so they have existing waiting lists, there existing community buzz about the programs. This one kind of started on its own, and I think it's been very well received. And it's happened with the amount of projects we've been able to do. It's a good number of projects. Prices have come in well, that's what I'm always interested in. Prices have come in well, we've made some really substantial improvements for a lot of people.
If you have any comments, probably kind, we'd love to see them, just to see how we're doing in this endeavor, it would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
The ones that I've received have been, have been overwhelmingly positive. Like, like anything, there's, there's some easy projects and there's some difficult projects. And the difficult projects we've had have really tested us. Get them done.
Thank you.
I'll be back in October to talk about it in more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two, three PCFs.
We know through email, right?
Two for substitute library employees, on-call, part-time, budgets approved, to cover vacations, signed by everybody so far.
Those are as needed?
Yep.
To fill vacations, and I think we had discussed that.
Yeah, so.
I have no problem.
Motion?
Make a motion to sign the, to every positions.
$8 an hour on-call.
Second.
All in favor? And then there's one for Janie Domina for the ZBA clerk. Is this another?
No, not an extension.
That's for permanent.
She's in the price range that was advertised and we approved.
So, so this is for the permanent ZBA clerk position, 813-99 an hour, as needed?
Correct.
Grade eight, scale four, start date, hire date, 821-12. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Does that conclude it, I think?
Mike, you asked me last two weeks ago, go and take a look at a piece of property. I did tell the board about it.
Oh, that's the manila?
Yeah, that's manila. This is at the top of Alden Pond. This is the lot right here. It's about 75% wet, but it's in the flood area, this pond.
And that's a gift.
Yeah, it's not flat, it's, it's kind of broke all through it.
So.
I mean, there's some backup here that I got from the assessors and.
It doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't consider backup to any of our own property?
Wolf Hill is.
Isn't Wolf Hill a part of Atherton?
Wolf Hill, I think, is either that one or this, this one here, I think. Wolf Hill comes right down to Alden Pond, too.
Right. So it doesn't, but it doesn't?
It, it doesn't physically. I mean, I think this is Frank Wayne's old property or his current property. And this is Fisher's. I, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've heard, my own feeling is, I, the conservation wants it, let them proceed and look at it. I don't think, my own feeling is it's, we should be taking up the tax rules that we have a use for.
All right, it's nothing.
We're going to take, they have a use for, you know, they might think down the future they're going to get some of that land, which, but I would forward to them and let them go and look at it.
You saw this, right? They've offered the property to the town. So why don't we refer that over to the conservation?
Fine with me.
Okay. Send that to Charlie and see if he, if they have an interest in this. I mean, otherwise, it's a piece of landlocked property that we can't.
It's not a lot of land, I think it's $16, $17 a quarter, and there.
How many acres is it?
I'm over, I think just under two, if I'm not mistaken, or around two.
Three, it says.
Three, okay.
So, I mean, but it's landlocked, so we can't get to it.
Well, you can get to any land.
Well, yeah, but there must be an easement somewhere to get to it.
There's no, there's no roadway or path to it.
Is this dotted line, the road going in?
That's the river, that's the road going right through it.
Let's give it to.
Conservation.
Conservation, see if they have a desire for it, if they figure out something. All right, let's do that. If I am not incorrect, that's the end of the agenda, isn't it? I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm not going to, this is going to give you an update. Last night, I met with conservation in regards to a catch base, which I said I would put in, but I wanted it very clear that the runoff by a 10-year vet or a 25 or 100-year vet was not going to be coming from the roadway, it's going to be coming from an area northwest, northwest of them, and that, on high events of rainfall, catch base is not going to accept that water. And the existing intermittent stream, below stream, has to be left alone and to take care of those discharges, because that structure and the system in the road is not adequate to take care of any kind of those flows. So I just want to let the board know, I am going to put the structure in like I said I was, but with the understanding that that intermittent stream be left alone, they handle it.
That's Mr. Feeny.
Yes.
Who's satisfied with the plan and he's not coming in today. So, he's happy, everybody's happy.
Well, not until you're done.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I want to thank Ed for giving it for.
What?
Well, for fixing that runoff.
The runoff was always there.
Right, but I mean, to make it, to make the situation a little easier to.
Well.
Deal with.
I just wanted to make sure that we, we weren't going to handle any major events. It's only going to take the runoff in the road, not from that drainage area way above it. It wasn't my concern. But it's working out.
Okay, done?
Yes, sir.
We have a meeting at the 28th?
Is that all executive sessions, right?
Yes.
It's all executive session.
Oh, there's some signatures here.
I think we did. I didn't even have a, as I did.
Well, I had them out, I put them back in and I know they needed to be worked on.
One we didn't do is the.
The note?
The note.
Right. I saw you put the information for that.
Yeah, somebody called me and tells me they need me to sign that. Although it's late now. Robert, you all set with town meeting?
Yes, so one article?
Well, no, there's more than one article on there.
Yeah.
But.
You're going to keep it on and then decide at the 10th?
Right.
So three?
There might be two, because she's got a warrant for the, a possible lease, so she's going to check in, shorten the lease, so we don't need.
Before that would be on warrant, maybe two get passed over, is that the?
Right, right.